All right, here we go. All right, good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting to order for thir- sorry, Wednesday, June 15th. A lot of things on people's minds nowadays, so we'll have a moment of silence for whatever concerns you. Thank you. McGinnis, Brian, City Clerk, if you'd please call the role for tonight.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp? Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ortes?
Here.
Nine?
Present, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Krupp. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole, I again want to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's viewing the meeting throughout any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We are happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a great place. Especially for folks in here, if you have a cellphone, I just ask you to put it on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council tonight on an agenda item or public business at the end, please come to the podium when it's time. The microphone's above you. Please give your name, water address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. And you'll have five minutes. Assistant City Administrator, Ms. Mayor? Anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So we have nine public hearings this evening, three under community development, five under Public Works, and one under Finance. All right, public. So, Community Development, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead those public hearings. Alderman Gripp? Please.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Brian, you got Alderman Gripp?
I'm here. Thank you. Public hearing number one on community development. I open public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way known as a portion of the alleyway in Block One of A.M. Cook's addition lying between Boyce Avenue and Rockingham Road. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is case CP 22-01 being the request of the City of Davenport to amend the Davenport 2035 Comprehensive Plan by assigning future land use map classifications to the approximately 200 acres of land bounded by I-80, Forest Grove Drive, Utica Ridge Road, and the city limit to the east. Is there anyone from the public here to comment? Number three is on the annual action plan for year 48 for the CDBG and home programs. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderwoman Lee, I'm sorry, Alderman Kelly will lead. Lee was on twice. They were looking forward to that. So Alderman Kelly will lead that. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five public hearings this evening. Open the first public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 43rd Street-Lincoln Avenue to Linwood Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the retaining wall replacement project at 510 West Sixth Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the fourth public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the state revolving fund best management practices parks projects. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And open the fifth public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the state revolving fund Duck Creek Golf Course Wetland Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next public hearing area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will lead. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open our first public hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed $45 million general obligation corporate and refunding bond series 2023. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Petitions and communications with council members and mayor. I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. And now that Monday, the City of Davenport will be closed, and that's, and therefore the sixth, the third ward meeting, which would have been on Monday, will be on Tuesday night, June 22nd, at the Police Department Community Room. And so I hope to see you there. The meeting is at 6:30. I'm going to have two guests, not from the city, but from out of the city. We talk a lot about how, what's happening with children and what people are doing to work with children. And so I have, I'm going to have two people at my meeting, Anne Shreekrath, who heads up Project Renewal, and Joyce Klopp, who heads up Hope at the Brick House. These are two phenomenal, community-based groups rooted in the community and serving a lot of children, many in third ward. And so Project Renewal is in third ward and Hope at the Brick House is very close. So they're going to be there to talk about what they do, what they see, their perspective. They're with these children all through the year, through school and through the summers, and maybe people can find out how they can help. So I hope you can join us for the third ward meeting, Tuesday, June 21st, at 6:30 at the Community Room of the Police Department. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jobson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the park over at Jersey Farms Park. We won't have as nice a weather as we did last Thursday out at Heritage. It was just beautiful, but it will still be nice and bring plenty of water. Come prepared and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Anybody else? So I'll just say, remind everybody, you experienced it this week, you're going to experience it again next week. The heat is really in full play now, so need to drink a lot of water, do a buddy check on everybody, especially the elderly children. When in doubt, check them out, make sure they're okay, because the heat is a dangerous thing. And so everybody look out for each other. I know we're talking about it later in the agenda, but you saw we announced through partnership with many folks, Fair Oaks coming, and I know they're here, and we'll talk about it later. But it's just a wonderful partnership and community effort here in Davenport and our staff working with folks to bring business here. And we're open for business. We want business to come here, and we're so proud of this investment and community folks coming together to bring Fair Oaks. But we'll hear more about that in a moment. So, anyone else? All right, we'll move to action items for discussion. There's four areas: community development, Public Works, Public Safety, and Finance. The first area is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 22-03 being the request of the City of Davenport on behalf of VSM Holdings LLC to... Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case ROW 22-03 being the request of VSM Holdings LLC to vacate unimproved right-of-way west of Elmore Avenue and south of Pheasant Creek. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? ... by assigning future land use map classifications to the approximately 200 acres of land bound by I-80, Forest Grove Drive, Utica Ridge Road, and the city limit to the east. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this? Anyone from the council here to comment? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution of support for the submission of a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for the 324 Main Street, the Davenport Project. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Absolutely. Jamie Lacandra. I live in Bedcore, 4255 Newport Court. I'm here to support a few of these, or I guess discuss them. So, got a few of the workforce housing tax credits applications coming through, and it's four really exciting projects. I think the Davenport especially, you know, being the largest building of these four that I'm going to walk through with you all, is such a pivotal, pivotal historic landmark building that supporting 79 units at a time when I feel like we need a lot of housing at Davenport, any help that we could get, you know, getting this through to the state would be greatly appreciated. Years passed, I think the Davenport building was a little neglected. The people, the tenants that had been let in didn't take as good of care of it as they maybe could have. So, we are looking at gutting and redoing all 79 units and the commercial spaces that are in there as well. So it's, it's a large project. As much help or support as we can get for the city on this one, you know, would make a big difference for it. I printed off some packets. You can see just what some of those pictures look like. Included some of the numbers for what that renovation budget would be. So not for the purchase price of the building, just for the rehab, we're looking at $4 million. So the developer's bringing $800,000 in cash and equity of his own personal money just to make this project happen. So being able to turn this one around really in the heart of the downtown Davenport scene, you know, across the street from where we are right now, I think would be a huge piece of the puzzle for us. So I do have the next three as well.
Okay. So I'll ask for comment from the council. You can sit down in the front and then feel free to come up for each one and speak about that project specifically. Is there anyone from the council who... Are there any other public comments on this item? Okay, we'll go to, we'll go to the city council. Alderman Kelly?
My question is, so 324 Main, what's going to happen to the folks that are still in that building? You said you're gutting it, the whole building.
Most of the people have already...
Sir, come to the...
Sorry about that. Most people have already moved out. There's a very large portion that wasn't actually paying rent. So when they were actually presented with property manager that took the time to go through and analyze each unit and make that determination, there was a large portion that unfortunately had left of their own accord.
So the only reason I'm asking, I have a friend that just moved here from Arizona to that building. So...
Okay.
So that answered part of it, I guess. So what happens to the rest of the people that are in that building?
So everybody that's living in their apartments right now that we've inherited, they're all staying there at their same rent that they've been paying. They're not being asked to leave. Now, as they go, you know, in upcoming months, years, however that is, we will gut those apartments that they were living in and update those at that time. That's actually a really good question.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council?
And try to buzz in.
We can buzz in. So just a quick question on that.
Yes, sir.
The ones that are remaining, that you pay the rent, let's say you get the majority of the other apartments finished, completely done, could those residents then, if they choose to stay, move into a different...
Absolutely.
... that's renovated?
Yep.
And then, then you could remodel, you know, because like I said...
Absolutely. In the middle of their lease, no questions asked.
Okay. And like I said, just please do anything you can to...
Yes, sir.
Give them the amount of time needed to find another place, because the last thing we want to do is put a, you know, somebody out on the street that has been there a long time. Thank you very much.
Alderman Condon?
Mr. Lacandra, let me open and hopefully, well, remember to close with thank you for your involvement in this project and the other projects on the list here. And I've been a big fan of you taking on some other projects as well that are...
Thanks, I appreciate it.
... at face value, pretty challenging. I will make a comment that as far as downtowns go, we only have one. And I'm always excited for people willing to step up and invest in some of these projects that can be kind of a passion and a business proposition at the same time. So I'm just asking you to do a great job.
Yes, sir.
And as far as management goes, again, when we have single entities controlling so many multiple buildings in our area, as management changes, for better or for worse, the entire downtown can pivot on that. So ask you again to do a great job on that.
Absolutely.
You know, close with thank you.
Sure, Sam, thanks. And anytime anybody wants to walk through, I'll gladly give a tour of any of these buildings on the list.
Any other comments from the council on item number five? Seeing no one, we will move on to item number six, which is a resolution of support for the submission of a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for the 311 West Third Street, Dorothea Project. Anyone from the public here to comment?
All right, so next up with the Dorothea, I can't say that this one was maybe neglected like the Davenport building had been. It was, it just wasn't, it hasn't received proper facelift, the updating. About a third of it is sat vacant for a number of years, and not due to neglect, maybe, maybe just due to interest, you know? And so this will be sort of a similar process. I appreciate Councilman Kelly bringing that up. So the third of the building that is currently vacant will be gutted immediately and then redone, updated. And then as tenants and the rest of the building move out, those apartments will then be gutted and updated as well. So the numbers on this one, so the renovation isn't quite as high as the Davenport building, but we are at almost $3.2 million, $640,000 in cash and equity, and the rest will be financed by Dubuque Bank. So hoping to have this done early of 2024. So we do have some time in front of us.
Are there any other questions from the public, comments or questions from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, we will move to council with comment. It's working. Alderman Kelly?
All right. So how comparable will the rents be for the folks that want to stay in the building after the renovations are done?
Everyone is going to be able to stay at the building at their current rent. We're only going to be working on the apartments that are vacated.
Right.
And so after, after the update has been done, probably looking at $250 to $300 a month increase on the ones that have been updated. So nobody's being kicked out or evicted or anything like that in order for us to redo these buildings.
Any other comments from the council on item number six? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Item number seven is a resolution of support for the submission of a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for 628 Harrison Street, Raphael's Emporium Project. Is there anyone from the public here to comment?
Sir, all right, so with Raphael's Emporium, this is a very different entity. There's not nearly as many housing units in this one as something like the Davenport or the Dorothea would be, but it's such an interesting project. Everything that's been going on, the historic aspects, some of those buildings, 1975. You know, I think there was carriage repair here at one point, and it just, it was an auction house for a while, and the older gentleman that had it forever, sort of his time got by, his health started to slip, and I think this building unfortunately suffered because of that. I tried to take some pictures just to show, it was almost like a borderline hoarding situation, everything that was jammed inside of this place. So the demolition alone is, is a huge price tag, just the removal of a lot of this stuff. There was a mudslide on the backside of the building as well, did it, did some significant damage. So this one especially, I applaud the developer on this one, making this happen. This is, this is a bold project. So turning this into seven housing units and then some commercial space as well, I'm going to be looking at doing like some salons and suites. So we're going to be taking a building that has essentially been abandoned for some time, or at least neglected to the point where really it shouldn't have been used very much, and we're going to turn it into some nicer housing units and a commercial space. I think again, is just a huge piece of the puzzle that's coming down south on Harrison. So that's going to be one of the things that people see immediately as we're getting into the downtown area.
Are there, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll open it up for council comment. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I will not be, even though I was not involved with this housing tax credit application, I am involved in the straight tax credits for this project, and so I will be standing from voting on it. It is an interesting project. It was one that Hilltop has long tried to find use for, and it's not pronounced Raphael. So I just want to, it's okay. That's what I thought too, until I tracked down the last surviving member of that family, and she said, "Why are you calling it Raphael?" It's Rayfield. It's a Jewish family, and that's, they did not pronounce her name Raphael. So in any case, we're all going to have to learn that because that's what I thought it was too. I said, "Well, ma'am, that's what everybody calls him." So in any case, I want, but I want me, I'll be standing for this one. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing no one, we will move on to item number eight, which is a resolution of support for the submission of a workforce housing tax credit application to the state of Iowa for the 307 West Sixth Street Roosevelt Project. Anyone from the public here to comment?
Sir, so this one I think is, is a great example of being able to get the city and state's help into turning something that was abandoned before and creating huge opportunity for a lot of housing units. So as you know, the Salvation Army was here for a long time. After they left, this building needed a lot of work done. It needed a significant amount of updating. So we're looking at doing 34 total units. We're going to be doing 30 two-bedroom units, and there will be four three-bedrooms as well. They're going to be nice. We're going to have washers and dryers in every single one, granite countertops, new hardwood flooring. This is a store tax project as well, so everything is going to need to be done now, as per their standards. But I'm really excited for this one in particular, just because we're taking something that essentially right now isn't doing us any good, and we're turning it into a place where you can put 34 new apartments.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll move to council discussion. Alderwoman Lee?
I want to say thank you. I grew up in a house that, in Massachusetts, where the oldest apartment was built in 1799. It still had bubbles in the windows, wide boards. And so I have a place close to my heart for these old buildings. And I really want to thank you for taking them and saving them so that they don't have to be demolished and they can continue on as an important part of Davenport as well as a source of housing.
Thanks, Your Honor.
As well as the other building that you're working on too. You're taking on a lot.
Appreciate it.
So thank you for helping with all that.
Alderman, Ortes?
Thank you. First, like I said, and last is thank you. These are four very good projects. Also, whoever the developer is, please tell them thank you to make this kind of investment in our downtown. I'll piggyback what Alderman Gripp and Alderman Condon speak of, is the downtown. All that we've invested, all the investors and developers that keep coming to downtown, it's pretty nice and makes it pretty good to sit up here and be able to approve projects like this, because once they are done, for people to drive by and be able to say, "Hey, look, this was in a very bad condition at one time," and to look at it now and what it sounds like it's going to be with all the other projects and developments that are completed in our downtown and the future projects that we as a council are talking about doing, it makes you pretty excited to live in the downtown, visit the town, downtown. So not only thank you, but please thank your developer for allowing the... Develop downtown in such a large scale. I appreciate that.
Thanks for having me on.
Are there any other comments from the council? All right. As we, as we move on from these workforce housing tax credit applications, I'll just reiterate what the process is. So this is, these are projects that are going before the state of Iowa, and ultimately the state of Iowa is going to prioritize the dollars that they have in that pot, and they're going to distribute them across the state to the projects. I think one of the requirements for these projects is that they have the support of the city where the projects are taking place. This is our letter of support for those projects, and we'll find out sometime this year if those projects are approved and which ones are. And typically, Davenport gets our fair share of the projects each year. We approved a few of these applications during the last cycle. We've got some on this cycle, and these are, are really good projects in our, in our downtown. Some of these are really significant buildings. They, it's significant because it's going to be workforce housing, and some of them are very challenging, and we've been looking for partners for as long as I've been on the city council and longer than that to try to rehab these. So we wish you the best of luck in your, your efforts to secure that state funding and see the projects to the finish line. All right. Item number nine is another exciting one. We've got a resolution providing preliminary approval for economic development assistance through tax increment financing to Fair Oaks Farm LLC, doing business as Fair Oaks Foods for the construction of a state-of-the-art food production facility located at 2951 Enterprise Way. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item?
Hi, Joe Frida, the chief operating officer at Fair Oaks Foods. First off, I just want to thank everybody for their hospitality yesterday in the press conference. It was great. Really made our decision feel good about what we made. We started out with 177 sites. For those who didn't see it and, and wound up picking Davenport. And that was a big deal. It was a process that took about a year. As a company, we are the 11th largest black-owned company in the country. We're privately held. We plan to be privately held for a long time. We're currently in our second generation and looking to, to grow that. We manufacture sausage and bacon and pizza toppings, meatballs, things like that. We sell our products all over the world. This project is really exciting because it's going to be fully cooked bacon. I like to say that bacon is the world's number one currency. It's hard to find people who don't like bacon. And, and it's going to support a lot of the, the state of Iowa. A lot of our raw material comes from Iowa. So that made things a lot easier for us logistically as well. What else can I tell you? You know, we're, we're just, we're going to provide 247 new jobs. We are, we did buy enough property. You know, our hope is to continue to grow in the community, grow the facility and things like that. But this is a big deal for us. Again, being a privately held company and, and the size company that we are, the total project's about $134 million. That's a big deal for us. That's something that we've, we've had to go out to three different lenders and, and solidify financing. So I just want to thank the city of Davenport and the city council for any consideration that we might get in any incentives to help make this project a little easier for us. So that we can remain competitive. Because it's, it's done. Protein businesses are. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who is here to comment on this item? We will move to public comments. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to those
Those from Fair Oaks for coming and selecting Davenport. I'm definitely supportive of this project. You know, I could have been maybe a little critical about the use of TIP funds as, you know, as we'd like to see those maybe be for more blighted areas. But you know, in the long, in the long term, you know, I think this is great use of, of some tax incentives. You know, it's not like we're, you know, incentivizing golf driving range or anything like that. So, you know, I'm very supportive of this and thank you for choosing us.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Well, as, as a representative of the city on the GDRC for the last six and a half years, this is just another great example of the economic development partnership that we have between the city of Davenport, city council and staff, the GDRC, the Chamber of Commerce and our partners with the state of Iowa. We've had a lot of economic development here in the last five years. $134 million, that's a big deal for you. It's a big deal for us as well. And I think your company has a great reputation. We're looking forward to getting 250, just shy of 250 new jobs online with an average wage of just shy of $24. I think that is a significant impact to the city of Davenport. I'm proud of the economic development work that we've done in the last five years. This is just another example of the success that we've experienced because of strong regional partnerships. And I'm going to give the mayor the honor of having the final word on this.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. So I said most of my piece yesterday, but I just want to reiterate, thank you. As you heard from many members yesterday, this quite possibly is one of the largest economic development things that's ever happened in this region. And it happens in Davenport. And with the work of the previous city councils and the current city council and the, and the collaboration between our city staff, the Chamber of Commerce, workforce, GDRC and many other folks. That's why Davenport's such a great place because we're ready to, to find things. And, and a testament to the company that they took their due diligence and went out to 177 sites. And then we're so happy that you chose Davenport. We're so happy that you're, you looked at us and, and said, this is the place where we feel our folks need to be. I'm so proud of the council and the staff and the, and the folks that work here in Davenport and, and call it home or call it the place you do business with the cooperation of the Quad Cities to, to do, to make business friendly environment here. And this is another example. We had one of the biggest investments here recently in Amazon. Now we have one of the biggest investments in manufacturing here in Fair Oaks. And we've had Sterilite, we've had Kraft Heinz, we've had all kinds of stuff. So if the word isn't out, you're not paying attention that this is the place to be. This is the place to invest. And we're so happy to be part of it and I'm so proud to just be a voice for that. So again, thank you, thank you to the council. And I ask my colleagues, please support this when we suspend the rules so we can get this. Remember, this is critical to do this today because the IEDA votes on Friday. That's why we're doing this, right? So we need to tell them we want them here. So appreciate that, Alderman Grip, for letting me speak.
All right, to that point, please note that staff request suspension of the rules to vote later on this agenda. Our final item for community development is a motion approving the annual action plan for year 48 for the CBBG and home programs and authorizing the city administrator or her designees to sign necessary documents and agreements. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item moves on. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you very much. I move that all items go on the consent agenda.
With the exception of item number nine, which will be voted on later in the agenda.
Oh, 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 yes, yes, of course. With the exception of number nine, which will be voted on later in the agenda. Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Lee. And again, just to reiterate, that request will be done later in the agenda, so hold fast, okay? All right, the next item or area for discussion is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Five items under the public safety agenda. First is first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled, "No Parking" by adding Christie Street along the west side from Locust Street to Kirkwood Boulevard. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, is there anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled, "No Parking" by adding various streets along the odd number addresses in Prairie Heights subdivision. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I just want to say on this one, this is, the HOA is trying to find a way to address the very narrow streets in the subdivision. And they've decided that one-sided parking is the way to go. So I ask for your support on this.
Anyone else from council wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, resolution approving street lane or public ground closures on the list of dates and times that hold outdoor events. I will read all of these and then ask for comment. First, Brandon Lynn.
Vance, graduation party, 906 North Brook Drive, Saturday, June 25th, 2022, 6:30 a.m. to 11 p.m. Closure, North Brook Drive from Mount Vernon Drive to 916 North Brook Drive. Next, Andrew Kaufman, Oak Street, 4th of July block party, 4415 North Oak Street. Sunday, July 3rd, 2022, 3 p.m. to 11 p.m. Closure, Oak Street from West 43rd Street to West 45th Street. Next, Tim Shea, Belcourt, 4th of July block party, 6123 Belcourt. Monday, July 4th, 2022, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Closure, Belcourt from East 61st Street to Parkview Lane. And last, Beertinis fundraiser, 3803 Rockingham Road, Sunday, July 10th, 2022, 2 p.m. to 10 p.m. Closure, South Gammon Avenue from Rockingham Road south to just north of the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next is item number four, motion approving noise variance requests for outdoor events on the list of dates and times. I know there'll be some comments on these, so I'll read each of them separately and ask for comments at, at those times. First, the Southeast Little League End of Season Picnic Prairie Heights Park, 5600 Eastern Avenue, Friday, June 24th, 2022, approximately 8:45 p.m. for 10 to 15 minutes fireworks over 50 DVA. Please note pending fire department approval and inspection. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Seven days ago, the city council had a passionate and sometimes vehement discussion about the adverse impacts of the explosive sounds of fireworks on the piece of neighborhoods, on people with PTSD, on terrorized pets, as well as the mess that is often left behind the next morning. Council then overwhelmingly voted to amend City Code 9.40.030B to reduce the hours of the discharge of consumer fireworks on July 3rd and 4th, subject to fines per City Code 9.40.030D for the discharge of consumer fireworks outside the window to reduce the adverse impacts on Davenport residents. Part D of the City Code states in part, "Use of any consumer firework at a date or time other than those allowed pursuant to Section B or the use of display fireworks, the commercial ones, without a permit is prohibited and a simple misdemeanor punishable as a schedule violation with a fine delineated." Part B outlines the allowable discharge times and dates for the use of consumer fireworks as amended last Wednesday. Part C provides for permits for the use of display or commercial fireworks to be issued by the Davenport Fire Marshal's Office pursuant to the criteria and the standards adopted by the Uniform Fire Code. Two days after council amended the City Code to reduce the adverse impacts of the discharge of consumer fireworks outside of the enumerated dates and times on those within city boundaries, we now have before us a vote to allow an entity to discharge consumer fireworks outside of the allowable dates and times enumerated in Part B of the City Code. City staff has identified a process that is consistent with Section C of the code for the discharge of display fireworks to provide for a permit for the conditioned discharge of consumer fireworks discussed in Parts B and D of City Code. I applaud the work that city staff has done to create a process for the opportunity for Davenport entities and persons to apply for a permit to discharge consumer fireworks outside of the allowable hours that is equally consistent, yet challenging for any parties applying for such discharge, is under the close review of the Fire Marshal's office with involvement of other appropriate city staff and is consistent with the City Code and that it provides for the application of Uniform Fire Code to the discharge of consumer fireworks. As staff finalizes this process as part of the special events policy, I have five requests for incorporation into the policy. The first one is that the Fire Marshal identify the potential area of adverse impact based on the elevation of the discharge site for the explosives, the height of the explosives at final explosion and the types of consumer fireworks to be used. The second one is that the applicant provide written evidence of due diligence in notifying those potentially affected and providing opportunity for public comment to the deputy city clerk, including in this notice, the notification of the discharge site, the area of notification, the content of the notification, the date of dissemination and the means of dissemination of this information. The third one, that the applicable ward alderman be identified of the application within three days of the receipt by the city of Davenport. The fourth one, that notification of this policy for the opportunity to obtain a permit or discharge of consumer fireworks outside of the times and dates provided for in Part B and therefore not subject to the misdemeanor punishments provided in Part D be included in all city information provided to the public, including the city Facebook pages and website and the postcard that is mailed to all residents in the city of Davenport. This will allow equitable opportunity for anyone within the city to apply for the permit because they will know that this opportunity exists. And there was also a problem with this application in that apparently the notices were put indoors, front doors, and many people didn't see them. And we're not clear even who, who received them. And then the fifth one is that discharge of consumer fireworks or explosives of any kind within a city park be allowable only with a permit from the Parks Director per City Code 12.72.606. That is already in the code. I just want to make sure that that's explicit. I also request that Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman place this item on the discussion agenda to provide further opportunities for council and public discussion. For this particular application, the location of discharge and therefore the adverse effects are located entirely within the eighth ward. And the applicant is located entirely outside of the eighth ward. The deputy city clerk provided us with two letters of objection to the requested discharge of consumer fireworks that would be discharged from the church parking lot located above the ball fields at Prairie Heights Park. Each letter represented multiple residents in two nearby neighborhoods. As this is under the noise variance section of the agenda, we have to recognize that the requested activity is not a parade and is not a band, but explosives being discharged high in the air. And therefore it'll affect a larger area. I was elected to represent the eighth ward and I will respect my constituent stated opposition to the requested discharge. I will therefore vote no on this application for the noise variance. I do not ask my colleagues to vote in any particular manner on this agenda item. I just request you to remember all your statements made last week about the annoyance, the terror of pets and the PTSD that we talked about at our last meeting. As a reason, and, and we use those discussions to amend the applicable city code to shorten the time for explosives. And I also would like you to consider, I ask you to consider, what you would do when the next application is submitted for discharge of fireworks in the wards, the ward that you represent and the neighborhoods there. So I'm not trying to rain on anybody's parade. I just, I'm asking for some change, you know, some additions to the process. I think it's a great process. I think it's a very needed process. And I am going to represent my constituents in the eighth ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. I, I do, Alderman Lee, I do understand your concerns for your board and for noise, the noise there. But I would just say as a representative of more urban, shall we say, ward, fireworks, legal fireworks happen weekly during the summer almost. They happen in conjunction with the ballpark, with events downtown, with events in the neighborhood such as Palmer usually has a fireworks event. So I, I guess my only thing, I want to make sure we have some perspective on this. I'm glad that we have a permitting process for this. I'm sure it will be carefully looked at and, and carefully managed by our fire department. But I would point out that, and I did, I did talk to Clerk, Clerk, Mr. Clerk, you, you talked to them and how far, how far away are the fireworks from where the people living would be, were? I mean, what's the distance?
So when I looked it up, based off the map they provided me, the closest residential property was just under 600 feet away.
And how far away did they go?
To distribute letters.
How widely did they distribute?
They said they went as far east across from the ball field as they could. They had 300 letters. They even went as north to the properties by the library.
And that was, you said, what, seven, something like 1700 feet away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And I make that point only because of this. We live in a city. We live in an urban area. I understand, and believe me, I understand the issues with fireworks because they're also set off illegally in a great deal in third ward. We, when we are rezoning a property and when our city is sending out letters, which I don't propose the city send out letters for this because then we create a process that's so cumbersome that it can't be dealt with. We, for regular rezonings, it's a 200-foot, that's who gets a letter from the city of Davenport when there's a rezoning request. If it's a PID, if it's a planned development, it's 500 feet. So that's who get notices, that's who get notices. Those are legal notices required by law. They have some application within the process of zoning. And, you know, in other words, if it's a 20% protest rate, et cetera, then it has ramifications of what we do at council. So I'm not discounting, you know, residents' concerns at all, but I would just point out that this is a 20-minute firework display. This is not, this is not, I think, you know, we know people can't put, I mean, I want us to be realistic with our residents. They can't put things in mailboxes. It's not their problem if people don't come to their front doors. So, and I don't think it's reasonable for them to, for a 20-minute fireworks display to go and knock on every door and make sure they've talked to everybody, which it kind of felt like was being said. So I just, you know, I like, I'm glad we have a process. I'm glad it's reviewed by the proper people, but I would hope we would not overbuild this. We are asking, these people went three times, three times to, you know, to, I can't even do the math. You know, they went over three times beyond the distance we do when we're asking for comments on rezoning, which is permanent. So I'm, just make that point. Again, we all understand our issues with certainly disturbances for fireworks, but I hope we don't make this too complicated for folks. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Alderman Jovgen. We've all experienced the intrusive and rude introduction of legal fireworks in the state of Iowa. And as in a council, we all seem to be broadly pretty well in agreement that we'd like to stake to take another look at that.
You can't help but wonder what they were thinking some nights when you're faced with illegal discharge of fireworks. This event, as we've all recognized, is a little bit different. We've laid out a good process to make sure that it's safer. It's providing insurance and it's being put on by a professional. This event twice now seems to be caught up in the frustrations of the state legalizing fireworks. I don't, I don't think they're really on the same parallel. A playful comparison would be trick or treating. If we had little monsters walking onto your property every night of the fall, asking you to smell their feet, that would be a problem that would be worth looking at. But we all happily support it one night or a couple nights a year to do something like that. Try establishing trick or treating in 2022. That'd be impossible. But, you know, 2022 for me has been a lot about keeping traditions and reclaiming traditions. And, you know, with the years that we've been faced with, so many have been taken away.
I'm happy to support an organization going about it the right way to do a firework display which is as American as apple pie and trick or treating.
So it's not to diminish any of the careful discussion and consideration and the reasonable concerns of some citizens who who have been really terrorized by the illegal discharge of fireworks, but I feel like this is just getting caught up into some of that frustration. So I hope we can parse those two things apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Jovgen. First, I'd like to just say that my recommendation would be if there's any changes to the process or codification of the process, that that be handled outside of this particular noise variance in a different forum with the city council. But secondly, I want to reiterate not only my support for this, but also Thomas Mason and Southeast Little League for their commitment to doing the right thing here. They very easily could have not asked for permission, shot the fireworks off, paid the $300 fine, and it would have been a lot less hassle for them. Instead, they jumped through every hoop that we put in front of them, including putting the mailers out. They're going to end up spending about 1,500 additional dollars meeting the requirements that we're putting on them to do this. That's a significant cost for a little league. But this is a traditional night for them. It's the championship night. There will be between 400 and 500 family people, family members there to watch three championship games, followed by a shared dinner and then pick up baseball games underneath the lights and the fireworks. It's a really great experience. Invite city council to come out and see for yourself. Yesterday, I referred to it as a piece of Americana, but it's Little League baseball at its best. So I appreciate the council's support on this. I hope that we can approve it. And, you know, as someone who also represents the people of the eighth ward, many of them are my neighbors. I live in a neighborhood that's bisected. Half of my, half of my neighborhood is in Alderman Jovgen's ward, and half of my neighborhood is in Alderwoman Lee's ward. I can tell you that there are a lot of people in my neighborhood who will be there and are in support of this. Their children play at the Little League. And I've also heard people in the neighborhood who say, we like it. We sit out on our front porch and we get a fireworks show from 600 to 800 feet away. It's not very noisy because it's so far away, but we can still enjoy the fireworks. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip.
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple comments. Do you want to go first? I'll let you go first, then I got a brief comment. Mr. Mayor.
I just want to say I too would ask that if there's a change to the ordinance or a change to the policies, or we do that separately. I think right now the Fire Marshal is very good about what he does and can handle the process. I think some of those comments that were requested are good, but rushing them through or doing it for now, I think we need to add them later. And then, as you've heard me speak to the fire and police folks, any illegal, absolutely go after them. But this isn't that, so I'd ask for that consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderwoman Lee, second.
I just wanted to make clear, I was not asking them to do it now. I did not make that clear, okay? I just wanted them to consider that as they improve the policy. And I also just wanted to clarify that the code addresses the types of fireworks that the Bandits do and that, you know, the College does, those are display fireworks. And those have a different section of code like I outlined in my comments. So yes, there are fireworks in more industrial areas, more public areas that are, go under permit as they should. And this is a very good process that's being applied appropriately to consumer fireworks. So I just wanted to clarify that it's basically what's happening in a neighborhood versus what's happening at the River Bandits on a Friday night. So thank you.
Yeah, and not to be argumentative at all, but I thought what I heard from the Fire Marshal yesterday was that some of these, including the College, they don't actually use professional-grade fireworks. They do actually use the commercial grade that the Little League will be, that the Little League will be using but shut off by professionals. So very similar to what we would approve with, with some of these professional shows that are going on. Did I understand that correctly?
Jim Morse, Fire Marshal. Yes, sir, you are correct. So some of the vendors that I've talked to that do the professional shoots, that have the certification, that do do this, River Bandits, that, those type of fireworks are the 1.3, which are the big, big ones that range from the four to the six-inch shells, the real big boomers. But the same people that put on those shows also do, do birthday parties in different venues like that, and they do use the 1.4, which is the consumer-grade fireworks. Palmer uses 1.4 consumer-grade fireworks, but they have a professional shooter and they follow all the requirements that are needed for a big display of fireworks.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Seeing no one else, just a few comments. I too am supportive of this process. I'm glad we have it and look forward to tweaks. I commend Alderwoman Lee for her diligence in representing her ward.
I'm supportive of the five points that she made in addition and look forward to maybe any conversations we have in the future regarding, regarding any further tweaking of the process. Having gone through the four-week process that ended last week regarding alteration of ordinance for legal discharge times, you know, I kind of questioned myself this week if I'd be hypocritical in supporting something such as this, but I don't think so. I'm going to be supportive. I think what we went through over the last four weeks was just a process that says, hey, we're trying to model behavior. We want to, you know, do what we can to try and control when fireworks are being discharged because of the nuisance we understand that they provide. I think this process enhances that, does allow people opportunities. Alderman Grip and I have been at some of these events where Southeast Little League did not ask for permission, but that was a different time. I do commend Mr. Mason and board members of Southeast Little League.
This year, also heeding our advice from last year and doing it in a timely fashion because last year they did come in at the 11th hour, so I thank them for that again. I am supportive of this. I still like to have fun. I don't hate all fireworks.
Next is Bradlin Vance, graduation party, 906 Northbrook Drive, Saturday, June 25th, 2022, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis, or are you waiting for the next one? Next one, okay. Seeing no one, that item will move on. Next, Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen, The Egg Drop at Yoshi's, 831 West 3rd Street, Saturday, June 25th, 2022, and Saturday, July 30th, 2022, 7:00 PM to 1:00 AM, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Jovgen. Yes, I'm going to request, I don't know if I need to make a motion now or next week, that this be, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion tonight that this be restricted to 12:00 midnight. We have sort of set 12:00 midnight as kind of a time when we cut the loud music off downtown and other places, so I think this should conform. All in favor?
Question, is there a voice book for that? Moving on. Next, Tim Shea, Bell Court, 4th of July Block Party, 6123 Bell Court, Monday, July 4th, 2022, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next, Coffee House, Brian Skow and Sons, 1315 Jersey Ridge Road, Saturday, July 9th, 2022, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next, KSI, Rock the Lot, 1035 West Kimberly Road, Saturday, July 16th, 2022, 4:30 PM to 12:00 AM, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next, Michelle Russell, The Heights of the Era, Lindsay Park, 2200 East 11th Street, Saturday, July 30th, 2022, 9:00 AM to 10:30 PM, outdoor music bands over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none. Next and last on this item is Dan Buin, Bix Party, 410 East 2nd Street, Saturday, July 30th, 2022, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Council? Seeing none, that'll move on. And last, we have item number five, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read the new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. We have Palmer College of Chiropractic, 1,000 Brady Street, temporary license with outdoor service, September 14th to 18th, license type beer wine. Next, Palmer College of Chiropractic, 1005 Brady Street, temporary license with outdoor service area, September 14th through 18th, license type beer wine. Next, we have items under B, the annual license renewals. Those are listed there for your review. We'll not read those, but then we'll finish up with items under C, request for exemptions for 19- and 20-year-olds on premises. Variety's nightclub, 822 West 2nd Street, event with outdoor area, July 1st through 2, license type Class C liquor. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items except for item four be placed on the consent agenda and that item four be voted, oh, yeah, be placed on the discussion agenda.
Mr. Chair, for a little clarification, that's just the Southeast Little League portion of item four?
We have a motion.
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? That closes. Public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Jovgen. Alderwoman Dickman. Next, there is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will lead. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 13 items this evening for public works. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 43rd Street, Lincoln Avenue to Linwood Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for retaining wall replacement project at 510 West 6th Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification and estimated cost for the FY 2023 50/50 stream stabilization cost share project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the state revolving fund best management practices parks projects. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the state revolving fund Duck Creek Golf Course Wetland Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the state recreational trail program for the construction of the Nahant Marsh Trail System project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding contract for the manufacture and installation of two generator heat recovery silencer units at the water pollution control plant to all torfer of Cedar Rapids, Iowa in the amount of $269,994. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding a contract to the Fire Station 3 project, Tricon General Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $10,784,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a contract for paratransit and other transit services to River Bend Transit of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for the West 7th Street, Taylor Street to Washington filtration removal project, Hawkeye sewer water construction of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $267,898. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution approving change order number one to the Goose Creek Trail Phase 2 project Midwest Concrete in the amount of $378,670. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a motion ratifying change order one and two with CDMI concrete contractors to Port Byron, Illinois for the Jackson Avenue, Clark Street to Farragut Street overlay and intersection reconstruction project in the amount of $52,348.20. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 13 is a motion awarding a contract for the West 69th Street and Jebbins Avenue resurfacing project to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois. and Jebins Avenue resurfacing project to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of ninety eight thousand thirty nine dollars and twenty five cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to place all items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that concludes Public Works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Final area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nine items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution making provision for the issuance not to exceed forty five mil-
Five million dollars general obligation corporate and refunding bonds. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Uh, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving an agreement with the Humane Society of Scott County for Animal Protection Services. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Thanks for joining us. Please step to the lectern and state your name or address, please.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Millard, and I'm the executive director for the Humane Society of Scott County. I currently live in Northeast Iowa in a little town called Edgewood. It's about two hours from here. Although I stay in Davenport during the week and go home on weekends, it's, I need to let everybody know that it's getting harder to go home on weekends, and if I didn't have lawn to mow, I probably wouldn't go home on the weekends. You have a lovely community, and I just want to thank you so much for your partnership with the Humane Society. We've had a lot of changes. I've been there six months. We have had a turnover of all new management. We have a new team, and we are doing much better. And there are several people here who are are we work with, and I highly enjoy every minute of it. It's it's a nice partnership, and we have a couple new programs. One just started yesterday called Pets for Patriots. It is the Pets for Patriots. Organization will pay for adoption fees for veterans to come to our Humane Society and adopt a pet, so we're very excited about that. I, if you have any questions for me, anyone, we really appreciated the city's assistance when we lost all five of our furnaces in November. And it was cold. It was very cold. Our all the emissions, you know, it was it was this pretty scary time. But with the city's assistance, they helped with heaters, and we were able to work through that, and the wonderful community with their donations, we were able by just around Christmas time to get five new furnaces for the top of our building, so we couldn't have done it without you, so thank you so much. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to.
So I'll ask if any of the remaining public have any comments, and then if any of the council members have a question. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this item? And then I'll open it up to council. Alderman Grip.
I don't think my my questions are for you, but I do want to welcome you to our community and and thank you. Congratulations on your new role. It's an important one. You and the city of Davenport, we have a relationship in in caring for our our animals, so who is the city person who will be answering questions, Ms. Merritt? Okay, so my first question is, we've added, in this agreement, we added the city of Davenport as an ex officio member on the board.
That's correct.
Is there a reason why it's a ex officio and not a voting member?
Uh, yes, as we were working with the Humane Society on that topic, it was determined that we likely had a significant conflict of interest as a voting member, just because we are paying for the service, so that's why it was determined to be that. We also felt like this was a good step forward, and then we could evaluate that in the future if it ever needed to be shifted to a voting member, but for right now it is ex officio.
Okay, now, I'm not going to make you tell me on the spot, but I thought that we we have some other organizations that we have some contractual agreements with where we have voting board members on their board. So if you could look into that, I just think that an ex officio is good.
It's a great step, and I'm agreeable to it. I think there's power in having a voting member, and when we're probably one of the top contributors, we probably should have a voting seat on the table, at the table.
So I think I understand, right? So this at times has been a tenuous relationship over the last probably four years, and I think I understand, but I but I'd like you to explain what has changed recently that has given us a sunnier view of the relationship and the services that we're receiving.
Sure, I'm happy to take that. Over the last year, we have began meeting monthly with the Humane Society. They are providing us monthly reports with metrics from everything, from number of citations that are issued to adoptions to fundraising efforts. I can tell you, as the person who's been charged with managing that contract through the good and the bad, we have seen a lot of improvement. As Tanya mentioned, a lot of the staffing changes are having very, very positive impacts in the community, and also with our team at City Hall. There is recently a brand new animal control manager that's been hired, has experience in this area, and and that's been working out nicely so far. And I would say, lastly, one of the things that we're most encouraged about regarding that relationship is the Humane Society's emphasis and understanding of the need for fundraising. I believe in the past, it has been expected that the city would continue to bridge all of the gaps, and Tanya's done a great job with her team of flipping that model that the Humane Society does need to fundraise. So overall, I would say staffing and fundraising are are two of the key indicators for us.
Thank you. Final question is, starting at three hundred and ninety one, what is that in comparison to the last contract?
It's a five percent increase.
Okay, and then we've got three percent built in for this contract. That's right. Okay, thank you. Well, you answered all of my questions, and this is very encouraging, and Tanya, once again, welcome, because I'm rooting for you to be successful, right? As we said, I I don't really want the city to get back into the the dog catching business. We would much rather that you do it, and we've got a need that needs to be served in the community, and I'm looking forward to this agreement being a successful partnership in the coming years. Thank you.
Alderman Cornet.
Thank you. I would like to welcome her as well, echoing Alderman Grip's comments. Thank you for what you do for the community, and I have had reason to work with the new animal protection person, and have had good results. Welcome to the neighborhood and look forward to working with you all in the future.
Thank you.
Seeing no one. Seeing no one else, item number two will move on. Item number three is a resolution naming the city park on North Marquette Street as Robin Creek Park. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Cornet.
Thank you again. It's, the park has been there for several years and hasn't had a name, and in standing with the, apparently, the city's plan, market, I mean, Duck Creek and Park and Goose Creek Park, we might as well name this one, I thought, Robin Creek Park since it's coexists with the park, so. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item number four will move on. All right, sorry, three. Item number four is a resolution approving the renewal of general and auto liability property and workers' compensation insurance, as well as related professional services for fiscal year twenty twenty three with multiple insurance companies in the amount of one million seven hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? Counsel? That will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving a twenty eight D intergovernmental agreement between the city of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District for the purpose of providing school resource officers at Davenport schools. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? No? Anyone from council? Item number five will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the architectural and engineering services for the Main Street Landing Destination Play Area Project to Sasaki Associates, Inc. of Denver, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? And I guess I glossed over that. Assistant City Administrator Mallory Merritt, are you, would you, are you prepared to present?
Yes, staff does have a presentation prepared if needed.
Okay, please. I'm sorry, I missed you.
All right. Right, I will get going while we're trying to get our technology all squared away. Perfect, thank you, Brian. When we last met on this topic, we were at this stage here to, where you authorized staff to go begin negotiating the contract with Sasaki for this particular project. I would like to thank Clay and Courtney for all of their efforts in successfully negotiating a contract with them that's before you tonight, and I'm pleased to tell you that the contract amount that is on your agenda is over a hundred thousand dollars less than what they initially proposed to us. So to the good work of our staff, we were able to bring something back to you that that was less and more in line with our budget. So the proposal, as as we remember from last time, there was a request that before this moved on tonight that we would provide an overview of the scope of services and exactly what we have hired or want to hire Sasaki to do. So so that's what is before you again tonight. So just a quick overview of our project team. We're happy to report back that the three individuals that are listed on this screen for you have a wealth of experience in this area, very regarded within their subject matter. Also, the chart to the right is a list of the subcontractors that Sasaki intends to use. You'll notice that many of them are local, and many of them are companies that we have done business with recently, most notably probably H R Green with the flood resiliency study, and this would allow the work of that study to carry forward into what we're intending to do here. So with that, there is a very significant scope here. So as I've spoken with some of you over the last couple of days, the contract price does reflect that. I I've been calling this a three in one contract, so you're getting a lot of pre-work and pre-planning, the geotechnical work, the topography work, and then moving into the renderings and the concepts and actually preparing the construction documents, and then moving into construction administration, and that's something that's unique in this case, is that Sasaki intends to be our partner all the way through until we have the ribbon cutting. So for concept and schematic design, this is mostly going to be focused on just all of the pre-kickoff items that are that are in the scope and existing conditions analysis where they are looking at soils, looking at fill, what type of fill, how much, and then also providing a regional context for us. Cost estimating will have, will be happening here, too. This is about the ten percent of progress level. As we move into the design development and construction documents, this is where the majority of the work occurs. Again, and I should mention that one of the things that really sets Sasaki apart from the others is their robust communication strategy and their public input strategy. So woven throughout all of this will be numerous waves, that's their term for it, waves of public input opportunities there. So in this particular stage, just some highlights, they will be taking the lead on railroad coordination for us, again, cost estimating, public engagement, wave three, and really kind of nailing down exactly what our concept is going to be. Bid documents and in actual bidding, they will work closely with us to prepare bid documents and help us through the questions phase from vendors that we may get, and that's, that is standard with A and E firms for us. Construction administration and permitting. So as you can imagine, with a project that's on our riverfront with a railroad right in the middle of it, and along, again, along the river, there are some permits that are needed that are more complex than just your standard project, so they will be our partner and and help us facilitate that process to make sure that we stay out of trouble there. So with that, we are now at the bottom of the gray triangle in our process, and again, I can't stress enough that there are many, many more checkpoints to come on this project and lots of opportunity for public input.
Thank you. I suppose, since I missed you, I apologize again. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? Seeing no one, then I'll offer the floor to Alderman Jobin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just first request that this item be placed on discussion for next week. I think we're getting to that, you know, jump off point, right? You know, if we're looking to spend this significant amount of money, you know, to award this contract, you know, I don't think we do so and then talk about it later and and pull things back. I think that would be a misuse. I've been critical of this Destination Play Area project, not critical of Sasaki. I think they're the right choice. No, no question, no question on that. It's just overarching with the project. I think we still have some unknowns with the railroad. And if there's a way to, you know, maybe push back this decision, push back committing this sizable amount of money until we get some more definitive answers and kind of understand what that plan's going to be, then that would be great. You know, I know with ARPA, the the time clock's ticking on when we have to spend this money and when we have to to get things done, but again, I I still have some angst about spending this this much money. You know, thinking that, all right, we're we're going to fully commit to this project without having some other ducks in our row. I do want to thank our Assistant City Administrator, Ms. Merritt, our Assistant Public Works Director, Mr. Merritt. Dollar sign did make me pause at first, but seeing that it is in line, learning that staff was able to negotiate, you know, about a hundred fifty grand off, kudos to them. Thank you for sharing that information with me. Thank you.
Alderman Jobin, I respect your caution. I was just going to tell you that if if we're, if this is the jump off point, I think Davenport is the child at the end of the high dive that we've all been encouraging for a long time. Now I'm the dad that's about to kick him in the butt. I'm excited. Next, Alderman Cornet, please.
Thank you, Alderman. I would just like to mirror Alderman Jobin's objections. I think the staff has done a wonderful job putting this together at a very fair price for the work that they're going to perform for us. I still have questions about the railroad as well. What can we actually get with five point seven million? Is it really going to be the destination park or just end up being a mediocre park because we don't have enough money to complete it? And my constituents say it's a waste of money. I'm open to building the park, but I need answers to a lot more questions before I give my thumbs up on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Grip. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. We talked a little bit about this last time when we gave approval to go into negotiations with Sasaki, but I, this is exciting. Sasaki is a world-renowned firm, they've got some really awesome parks in their portfolio, including Schmal Park in Cincinnati, which is built to be flood resilient. They also have H.R. Green on their, on their team, which means that they are locked in on what our comprehensive flood plan is, and anything that they do is going to be in line with our long-term flood plans, which is super important.
The two big concerns have been flooding and the railroad, and then obviously cost, spending millions of dollars on an amenity.
I think the flooding has really come into focus with our flood plan that was done by H.R. Green. We also have them on this project leading the effort for Sasaki in that regard, and railroad negotiations continue to be positive, and then along with that, also, we've got the Destination Iowa money that's out there. Debbie Durham from the state of Iowa was here last week, we got very positive feedback on what we're doing on our riverfront, and this, this ARPA money could be the money that leverages quite a bit of more money to get this project across the finish line, and something we can be truly proud of. You know, and then, and then there's always that consternation about spending money on amenities as opposed to infrastructure, and I just think about our friends in Bettendorf who are getting ready to plan an eighteen million dollar expansion of the splash landing swimming pool. Eighteen million dollars, and they will pass it, and they will do it without having to fight it every time it comes before the city council for years. They will just do it, they will spend it, and they will be a better city because of it. But for us, anytime we want to do something nice in the city of Davenport, it feels like we have to argue with ourselves, argue against ourselves, and it's time that we move this thing forward, get it done, and add something awesome to our riverfront that we've been planning for over a decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. I can ask a question, and then I have another comment, and I don't know, probably, Ms. Merritt, that, in terms of, we do have a lot of moving parts right now, but in terms of the railroad, when do we, when are we looking at maybe seeing it? But that would probably be for a turny corner. Well, when would we be, do you think we'll be seeing something bad?
I guess I wouldn't want to say anything more than, you know, it's going well.
All right, very good. Okay, and I'm not asking any more than that. And when would, when would Sasaki begin the process? I couldn't read quite the, the date, I'm not sure, Ms. Merritt, I couldn't quite read the date there, I'm sorry. My eyes aren't that good.
Clay Merritt, Public Works, so pending the contract approval, they would probably start within the next few weeks. Probably the first set of things they need to do is get all of our sets of plans, become familiar with it now that they'd be on retainer, and then we'd probably move into the first to start talking about what the initial round of communication is to the public.
So, thank you very much. So I guess I would, you know, I won't do my pushing-up Daisy speech again about I'm going to be doing that before it's done, but, that I did the last time, but I would say we, there are moving parts, and I understand, I'm glad that we put it on discussion again, I think that's the right thing to do. I, I know there are a lot of moving parts, but as Alderman Grip said, let's keep in mind that we have answers about potential, we have potential solutions for dealing with flooding that we didn't have when this project was first proposed. We are moving forward with the railroad and may have some answers there, which we didn't have and didn't even have to consider the last when we first began talking about this. I think staff has done a very good job of getting up to the plate and hitting the ball on some real curveballs that have come to us over the last year. So I would also encourage us not to be hesitant about this. There are always going to be questions, but we have a lot of answers, and we have a lot of data really that we just have with the flood plan and everything else, and I agree, I feel like sometimes, as a city, maybe we don't feel like we deserve nice things, we do. And if we want people to come here and come to our riverfront, then that is something that's going to draw them, so I really hope that people will support this. I do, let's not be afraid of the moving parts, because I think we've proven ourselves to be capable of dealing with the moving parts as they come to us in this location, and so please, let's move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll just give a few comments. ARPA was voted on and passed, remember? We started with fifty-five, and we narrowed it to ten, and there was broad, wonderful engagement and discussion on those projects, and it was passed, so this is one of those. When we talk about infrastructure, we continue to provide record-level funding for infrastructure, streets, et cetera, we'll continue to do that. So we get that. H.R. Green, along with Sasaki, both worked on the flood resiliency plan, and now they're working together on this. They absolutely understand each other, and they absolutely know the issues with what anybody's concerned with with flooding, so I encourage my colleagues, I encourage to keep moving forward and not go backward. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. Part of the scope of this is to stay within a budget, correct?
Thanks.
Yes.
My enthusiasm for this project has overflowed at times, so I'll try not to rehash all my points, but many, many years ago now, looking at the River Vision project was the reason that I wanted to come back to the Quad Cities and get involved, so, and now with an unmatched supply of fully cooked bacon, I don't think there's any reason any college age-
If this stuff works, then I'm really excited about it. I could grudgingly put it on discussion, but I look forward to that discussion.
Item number seven. Yep, resolution adopting the internal revenue service mileage rate to reimburse employees for the use of a personal vehicle for city business. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number seven? Council? Item number eight is a motion approving the purchase of Fiber Volts for Fifty-third Street Phase Two from Graybar Electric Company, Inc. of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number eight? And item number nine is a motion approving, I'm sorry, council? Item number nine is a motion approving the renewal of a facility management agreement for the River Center and Adler Theater through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six with Venue Works, Inc. of Ames, Iowa. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number nine? Welcome, please step to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Russ Ferguson. I am Vice President for Venue Works. I live in Marietta, Georgia, so, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the council for the opportunity to continue our relationship. It's been a long, rewarding relationship for us, and we are very proud of being here in Davenport, and would like to continue. That's all I have, unless you have something for me? Thank you.
We'll ask you to step back up if they have any questions, but thank you for joining us. Anyone else from the public wishing to address item number nine? And council? Well, thank you again for joining us today. Below on your agenda, we have purchases from ten thousand to fifty thousand, we won't read each of those individually, but they're listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
I move that all items except six be placed on the consent agenda, and item six be placed on the discussion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon, Alderman Cornet. I'm just going to take a little thing, and I just got an alert just so everybody's aware when they leave here. We are now in a severe thunderstorm warning for Scott County, so be advised, and maybe check your particular weather issues as you drive or move, because we're in a warning now, so just so you're aware of that. All right, next item, do we have any other items under ordinances, resolutions, motions? If we do, first, is there a motion for suspension rules to vote on the item?
Second.
Motion is second. Brian, please call the rule for suspension of the rules.
Grip?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Cornet?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, thank you. The rules are suspended.
Suspended, so now I'll read the resolution. The resolution providing preliminary approval for economic development assistance through tax increment financing to Fair Oaks Farms, LLC, doing business as Fair Oaks Foods for the construction of a state-of-the-art food production facility located at twenty-nine fifty-one Enterprise Way. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, we'll in all remove the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Brian, please call the rule for this resolution.
Lee?
I'm sorry? Was that?
Lee?
Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry. Jobin?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, I'm proud to announce that resolution is adopted. Is there any public with business? Very good. Is there any more reports, Ms. Merritt? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do you guys want to talk? Okay, so, if it's okay, there's-
Yes.
There was a motion and a second. So if there's a motion, no second, right?
No, no second.
Okay, we'll pause, unless there's somebody seconding. Okay, I'll go back to public with business.
Please step to the thing and give your name, order, address.
TJ Schneckloss, Superintendent of Davenport Schools. President Goza and I wanted to personally thank the city and the police department for helping us move our graduation from the I Wireless Center, Tax Layer, the Mark, whatever it's called now, to the Adler Theater. They recently changed their rules that they could cancel an event within six months, and they had a concert that came to town, and the Davenport Schools' graduation was canceled at that event in December, and we met with the mayor and our city, our city officials, and we figured it out, and I want you to know, we had a beautiful day downtown. We filled the Adler three times, brought seven thousand people to downtown, and we couldn't have done it without the collaboration of the city. We couldn't have done it without our police officers that were there that had to adapt and overcome, and I would like to share some of the comments with you that we heard. While we have challenges, stubbed our toes, you know, with ADA issues and different things like that, but we brought a lot of people downtown that don't hang out downtown very often, and the comments like it's beautiful down here, there's a lot of things to do. And also, one of my favorite comments was when the street was closed, because we very quickly realized we had to close the street in front of the Adler, it felt like that the environment felt like after a Cubs' big victory around Wrigleyville. People were taking pictures, they were celebrating, and there's beautiful artwork downtown, and there's statues, and just great places to take graduation photos. And so on behalf of the administration and school board, I know President Goza's going to speak, we just wanted to say thank you, because that was not an easy task, and it was a beautiful day, so, President Goza?
Dan Goza, School Board President, live in the eighth ward. I think TJ and I took it out of the park. We just wanted to thank you all again, and highly, highly thank the Davenport Police Department for all their help. They were out there all day with no sunscreen on, so those poor fellows, you know, and it was hot out, so we greatly appreciate it. It was a way different experience from previous graduations, a little more intimate and snug, but we made it work, and we appreciate that, and then it was great. I pulled up in the morning at eight AM to drop my daughter off for choir, so I was there till eight o'clock that night, and to see the tow trucks lined up, getting cars out of the way, the cops there, boom, boom, boom. If you were parked, you were towed, and it worked out great for us. They were able to get people in that were handicapped and things like that, so we greatly appreciate the partnership, so.
So, I'm going to break president here and let, if council want to comment to their comments.
Thank you for the privilege, Your Honor, but I'll never get it again. I just want to say thank you, as a parent of a recent graduate and attended that event, it was fantastic. It was, everybody did a fantastic job, and I couldn't be more prouder of the city and the school district, so thank you.
Alderman McGinnis.
And I would, thank you, Your Honor, and I thank you, too. I mean, I think this event belongs to the city of Davenport, whatever we have to do downtown to make it a great, the smaller area is probably a more intimate thing and more exciting than perhaps in a larger, where you can get lost, so I really think it belongs here, and I'm really glad you guys worked at that, so whatever I can do to help next year, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, Alderman Grip.
I know it was a challenge going from Tax Layer to Brady Street to Adler, and I know you guys had many headaches over that, but my social media was just flooded with awesome Davenport graduation pictures, and getting your picture taken in a downtown is better than getting your picture taken in a parking lot, right? Verifiably, plus we had the beautiful riverfront, and it was awesome. Hopefully, there's an opportunity again. I know you guys will make a decision, but we'd love to have you in downtown Davenport.
Anyone else? I'll say thank you for the partnership to our best partner in the city, the Davenport School District, and to you folks, the coordination to our staff and your staff working together to get this done. I agree, Davenport kids graduating, Davenport and the other, we need to help that, continue that relationship. We're happy to work with you and do that, and it's important, it was intimate, it was great. The scenes and comments that I heard were all positive, it was such a wonderful event, and kudos to you guys to work with our folks and our guys working with you folks to make this happen. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Alderman Dunn, West won the traveling trophy award, we voted on Monday night.
And to TJ, it's so cool to see, you know, that, because I know you don't get to see much with the Chicago Cubs victory thing, so.
I apologize, my colleagues, I am out of order, so I apologize.
There was a bunch, there was a bunch. Second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.